Starting up.
Thank you. Good afternoon, the time is now 1:01 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education Regular Meeting of April 13th, 2021 is reconvened. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there is one individual, and that is Brandy, I'm sorry, Barry Frankel from Huntington Woods. Ms. Frankel, are you on the phone?
I am.
Okay, let me, if you will indulge me here, I will read the rules for public comment, and then you will have three minutes to address the board. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting, they may reach out to you later. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people, and disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. So if you will please repeat your name, Ms. Frankel, and where you're from, and begin your public comments, I will have a timer here, and you will begin.
Thank you, my name is Barry Frankel, and I'm from Huntington Woods, Michigan. As an elementary teacher with a K-8 certification and a master's in curriculum instruction, I had two decades teaching as well, beginning teachers at the university level in three different counties. I also currently work with K-12 individuals in small groups to support reading and writing with an emphasis on dyslexia, executive functioning, and study skills. I'm a Berkeley School District parent of three, two graduates, one that is 23 right now, and she's a physician assistant grad at U of D Mercy. My son is a sophomore in the Ross School of Business in Michigan, and my second grader is at North International Middle School. I'm calling for a few reasons. My children, who I've worked with, my own children and my students experience much growth, success, and learning even during this most challenging year. So where do we go from here? I see it as two choices. It's easy to go back to the familiar, go backwards, be reactive, or we could be progressive. We learn so much, and we could move forward and be proactive. Therefore, I'm led to address Michigan's Strategic Education Plan, especially Principal Four. All students are provided every opportunity to achieve the broadest range of life dreams, to engage students and foster creative and critical thinkers. Now is the time to expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. I see this as a great time to address equity and diversity in curriculum. It could be project-based, maybe we switch asynchronous, as my district has had it Wednesdays, to days of choice and differentiation that can be beneficial to the new diversity inclusion curriculum mandates that are very necessary. Why would we encourage going backwards rather than embracing all the growth and learning from technology to equity and everything in between? Could this be the space and time to bring the state of Michigan's public education system back to the top like it was in the 1980s? Thank you for this opportunity to contribute or support or spark an idea to build on that I hope I would be able to be a part of in the future, so that we can positively influence Michigan and our students in the world beyond public education. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Frankel.
And this concludes public comment. Ms. Frankel is the only one during the day that has requested an opportunity to provide public comment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Presentation on Growth of Charter Schools and Charter Virtual Schools: Two Policy Reports from Western Michigan University and the National Education Policy Center. Today, we have a presentation on the growth of charter schools and charter virtual schools. Information from two policy reports will be shared. This is an informational presentation and does not require board action. Our presenter is Dr. Gary Miron, Professor of Evaluation, Measurement, and Research at Western Michigan University. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Dr. Miron, welcome.
Thank you. It's actually, I've attended some board meetings over the years, but I haven't been a presenter at State Board of Education meetings since, I think, around 2002, when we finished our second comprehensive evaluation of charter schools for the Michigan Department of Ed. So I'm very pleased to be here and grateful for the invitation. I'm going to be talking about two policy reports, which are pretty comprehensive reports that we prepared. One was published in February, that was for the National Education Policy Center, and we were, that's basically called the 15th Edition of EMOs, EMO Profiles. And this is a project that we've been working on since the late 90s, when we noticed that states weren't, and the federal government wasn't aware of or tracking the growth of these for-profit and nonprofit companies that were operating charter schools. So we created an inventory and started tracking these. So over the last 21 years, 22 years, we now have 15 editions. So we just completed the 15th edition, and that was released in February. The second report, also, we were sponsored to do this with the National Education Policy Center, that's on virtual schools, and we've been doing these types of annual reports on virtual schooling and blended learning schools. And blended learning is basically the hybrid schools, blended or hybrids learning. We've been doing this since 2012, and tracking the trends and what's, and the outcomes in the sector. Our next report, I'm going to highlight some findings today, it'll be a bit of a teaser. The next, this report will actually be coming out the first week of May. I'm not going to be sharing any of the national findings specific that will come out, but I want to talk about some of the findings specific to Michigan. So that's going to be the focus of my presentation, and I'm going to take about 20 minutes to do that. I've got about 18 slides, which is a lot to cover, and so basically, I'm not going to cover them all. I'm going to talk about, a little bit about methods, I'm going to jump over a few slides, and I'm going to focus on Michigan, and then I'm going to focus also on what I think are the policy-relevant outcomes or recommendations from our research. So just in terms of this research, when we do this, we call this desktop research. We sit and look at the EMO report, me and my doctoral students logged more than 2,000 hours of work over three years during this study to make this last edition. And that's identifying schools, identifying EMOs, and then after we go through that lengthy process of identifying, making sure that they have an EMO relationship, not a vendor relationship, and that often requires a lot of FOIA requests and other things to vet these schools and companies. Once we've done that, we can merge our data sets with federal and state data sets. So we bring in demographic data, we bring in outcome data, we bring in all kinds of other data. But the first and most time-consuming process is identifying companies and schools. And then, like I said, we do allow all the schools and the EMOs, we let them know in advance, the EMOs get two notices about what we're going to publish, so they can verify or correct anything before we publish. So that's the nature of this research, it's more like a statistical digest, and it serves as an important policy report, not only for Michigan, but really, these are national reports for the nation as a whole. This is just the growth chart here on the growth of the EMOs, the companies. You can see there's a difference and a shift around 2009, when the nonprofit EMOs became more numerous relative to the for-profit EMOs. The for-profit EMOs tend to, however, have more schools and bigger school size. So here's, in terms of the number of schools, we're now looking at, you know, quite a lot of schools across these two sectors. Most of them are charter schools, about 7% are district-operated schools. So district school boards also can contract with an EMO to operate one or more of their schools, but most of this is the charter school sector. What I think is most important to track is the number of students, because that's basically, gives us a sense of how the reform is being impacted. And we saw two years ago, a shift where just over 50% of the nation's public charter school students are now enrolled in privately operated schools. And this is, charter schools are a public school reform, and now, you know, we're on a trend, by 2030, our trajectory suggests that 80% of the nation's public charter school students will be in privately operated, and I have to emphasize increasingly privately-owned. And I say they are privately-owned because we see the ownership of the buildings and the relationships of these companies that own them with EMOs, and also, we're seeing outright purchasing of schools, of charter schools, by other entities, by other EMOs, which is a remarkable thing that we've studied over the last three years as we collected our data, and I may touch on this again later in my presentation. But what's interesting about Michigan is Michigan is in a bit of an analogy or anomaly here. We have, by far, over the years, had the highest proportion of our schools operated by private EMOs. When I was a state evaluator, I remember in 1999, I went to the Michigan Department of Ed to talk to the program officer, and I talked about these private groups that were starting charter schools, and he said, absolutely impossible, this is not at all. And it took some convincing, but by the time our final evaluation report came out, we were able to highlight and document about 40 EMOs that were already operating in Michigan, many of them small with one to three schools at the time, and since then, some have grown. But they do exist, and today, we see they're, you know, pretty prevalent in Michigan, mostly compared to other states, we see Michigan much more prevalent with the for-profit EMOs than the nonprofits. Interesting, California, which is one of the highest bars there, it has recently, three years ago, two and a half years ago, they passed a law restricting the for-profit EMOs, so many of them are now officially nonprofit, but when we look into the tangled web, many of them just have created a nonprofit shell that holds the charter or is working and operating the school on behalf of the for-profit. So, but Michigan does stand out with, probably Florida's in a very similar boat, but the population in Michigan, you know, we don't have as many schools as Florida, that charter schools and privately operated schools, but as a percentage, we are much higher. Here's in terms of our, the percent of the charter schools operated by EMOs in 2018-19, and here you can see we're just about 80%, just above 80% of the schools, and when we look at students, which is the most important thing, we're at 88% of Michigan's charter school students are in schools that are privately operated. And most of them, I think that's about 69% for-profit EMOs and 19% nonprofit EMOs. And that's really different. You see a couple bars in this chart, like Alabama, Idaho, a couple, Wyoming, and so forth. These schools that say, they show 100% of for-profit EMOs, while those states only have one or two, three schools at the most. So we're looking at percentages here. When we take away those blue bars that go to the top, we see that Michigan really does stand out, especially with the for-profit grip on this particular sector. So when we look at virtual schools, we see a similar trend where virtual schools are largely, the driving factor of them is the EMOs, and again, mostly the for-profit EMOs. In Michigan, we have 47 virtual schools. About two-thirds of the students are in for-profit operated virtual charter schools. And also, the districts are involved in the game of virtual schooling, and please note that our data is actually pre-pandemic, but the districts were involved, there's 38 district schools at the time. The districts tend to have much smaller enrollments, and they tend to have focus on the upper secondary grades, the high school grades, and many of them are more like credit recovery programs, where the virtual charter schools and those driven by the for-profits, they tend to have pretty even enrollments from kindergarten to grade 12. We looked at outcomes for virtual charter schools. We have not done that in our EMO report. Again, we're tracking, you know, 3,700 schools operated by EMOs, but for our virtual study, we have tracked the outcomes, and specifically, we look at state-assigned ratings to see whether the virtual schools meet their respective state standards. And in the country as a whole, we had about 47, 48% of the virtual schools meeting their respective state standards. In Michigan, however, there was only 17%. And we defined acceptable based on the guidance from the Michigan Department of Ed, if they have a school index score lower than 60, and there's 100 points on that scale. And so 83% of our virtual schools are not meeting state expectations, according to our accountability system. I know we've kind of collapsed this into a dichotomous variable, you know, acceptable and acceptable, but we do this because every state has a very different rating system. You know, Florida uses letter grades, and some states use colors or names, and we tried to look at each state's guidelines on what was acceptable or unacceptable and break it down that way, and it just allows us some way to compare states, to compare schools within different states, because we're comparing them still to their respective state expectations. Blended schools didn't do much better. There, we only had, well, actually, we had zero of Michigan's blended schools, 33 of them actually met, had an acceptable index score, but one of them, one of them didn't have any data available, but 32 out of the 33 did not have an acceptable rating. The graduate, graduation rates are also very low, and below what we're seeing for virtual schools and blended learning schools elsewhere in the country. We're at 45.4% awaited graduation rate for blended schools, and 44% for the blended schools. So these are lower. Nationally, we're seeing, I think that the graduation rates were about 52% for virtual schools in the country, and that's comparable to the national average of 85% graduation rates. So people say, wow, this is shocking. We don't find this surprising at all. We've been doing this since 2012, and every year, the results, the outcomes that we track for virtual and blended learning schools are not, they're disastrous. Other independent groups, including Credo, a research center at Stanford, have come up with findings that are even more devastating than ours in terms of portraying the outcomes of these schools. But pretty consistently, all of the independent evaluations and research suggest that this is not working. Some people have said, oh, Miron, he's a, he's a naysayer. I actually believe in virtual learning. I believe the future is going to be blended learning, but I teach virtually, even before the pandemic. I know it can be done, but it has to be done differently than the current model. So I'm not a naysayer, I'm just evaluating the outcomes, and if the outcomes are terrible, I'm against them, but I know that they could be better. So we learned a lot in this process of compiling the data, these data sets for both of these studies, and probably the most fascinating thing is this interconnected webs of nonprofit and for-profit entities, and there's trusts, and there's building, foundations for school facilities, and then there's these relationships, like where they look like there's separate entities that own the building and then operate the building, but they're connected. We're also seeing this web also going between these, sometimes the fronts, these, like in Tennessee or California, where they restrict for-profit EMOs, now they've got nonprofit EMOs working for the for-profit EMOs. And another trend that we're seeing is even that some of this web has extended overseas, where some of these EMOs are working in these conglomerates with, and going into other countries. Here in Michigan, we have one, possibly two, schools whose headquarters of their management company is actually overseas. So that's pretty, probably didn't think about this back in the 90s, when people were debating this new school reform idea, but that's what's come of it. And it was really fascinating for us to try to untangle that web and create those profiles for all those EMOs. I should point out, some people say, oh, that's not fair, you shouldn't call the nonprofit EMOs EMOs, you should call them CMOs. And CMOs are charter management organizations, and they are a term that is developed in part around 2005 by the charter school advocate groups, in part to distance themselves from the for-profit EMOs who were with Edison Schools and a few others. They were having some bad press back in the day, and there were some scandals about some of their performance and finances. So the philanthropic sector really shifted towards supporting and promoting the nonprofit EMOs. We've always considered them EMOs, nonprofit or for-profit, but they are privately operated, and we don't see, we see less and less of a distinction between them over time. When we look at their management agreements, similar fee structures, similar conditions, when we look at, in a 2015 paper I did with Bruce Baker at Rutgers, we looked at the salaries of executives, and we saw that people in the nonprofit EMOs had much more lucrative incomes and were benefiting much more than what we could see in the for-profits. So just because they're nonprofit doesn't mean that they're not profit-oriented, or are not, people aren't profiting on them. That's our conclusion. There are about 20 to 30 EMOs that I would classify as CMOs. The New Schools Venture Fund, and in our study, we consider CMOs a subgroup of nonprofit EMOs, and they are getting philanthropic support, so they're bringing more to the schools than they take in their fees. And they are bringing what they call the successful models to scale. And, well, that's a subgroup. We're talking about several hundred nonprofit EMOs in the country, and most of them, we're seeing some of them changing from nonprofit to for-profit status. We're seeing, like, Imagine Schools finally getting approval from the RARS, and this is a very controversial for-profit company, now becoming a nonprofit company. We don't see much difference between the two. And another thing is government, governance. When it comes to governance and control of the schools, whether it's a for-profit or nonprofit, it creates privatization complications for not only governance, public governance, but also transparency. So we don't separate them, we, I mean, we separate them in our charts and our report, but we still call them all EMOs, whether they're for-profit or nonprofit. We have seen, like I mentioned earlier in those charts, that the nonprofits are growing faster than the for-profits. Part of that is because states are taking action against the for-profits, like California, Tennessee, that have now restricted them, and so nonprofits are going to take their place, even as shell companies. There's a kind of an exchange here with the charter school world and these EMOs. The EMOs want to grow, they want to become more profitable and have economies of scale, and so they have become a driver of growth for charter schools, and the charter school advocates and their organizations, they want charter schools to grow, and they see the EMOs as a way to generate more proposals, create and open more schools, and fuel the growth. Back, I remember, 2002, 2003, I was projecting with the scandals at Edison and some of the for-profit EMOs, that the charter school reform would plateau, because it just wasn't that many leaders or local entities or groups or individuals that would have the wherewithal to start a new school, that's really challenging to do. So I kind of sensed that things were going to kind of level off and plateau, but they didn't. The nonprofits came in and they picked up, and they've become that vehicle for growth for charter schools. Here's a couple more trends here, they're diversifying. Also, the so-called nonprofit EMOs, they are also operating increasingly, getting federal grants to work with district schools on school improvement programs and other things. They're working with summer schools. Many of these companies are diversifying, and they're working with both charter schools and district schools. Another reason not to call the subgroup charter management organizations when they also work with district schools. Why does all this matter? Back in the 90s, a charter school idea here in Michigan, it gained some bipartisan support. In other states, there was much more of a bipartisan reform idea. Charter schools were going to be not a reform about privatization, they were going to be about a new form of public schooling. They were going to be locally-run, autonomous, highly accountable, transparent, you know, they're going to be open to all. They were going to be a new form of public schools. And with the growth of the EMOs and the control of the EMOs in how this sector is evolving, we don't see these schools as being locally-run, we don't even see them being locally-generated. The idea is coming from a market analysis by the companies who go out and decide where they want to create schools, and take those decisions, have an informational meeting, create the board after the fact. So this is some of the growth that we've seen. We are proposing some guidelines and safeguards, and that's the policy-oriented part here. I think in order, you know, some of these things are really, I think, quite obvious and should gain bipartisan support, even in states like Michigan, because they're pretty self-evident. But charter schools, because the EMOs are often starting them, they often, and I know if in the state Michigan Department of Ed, when they see applications or at the charter school offices at the authorizers, you can see when the proposals for charters come in, they're signed by employees of the management company, because they don't have a board in place. We believe that an authorizer should not receive any applications from a management company, there should be a charter school board in place first. And, because this is, and if this happens, it's also going to give that, it's going to empower that board to have, understand its importance and role in overseeing the management company, because oftentimes, the boards really think that they're advisory in nature. We also believe that it's important for authorizers to require, if a charter school board wants to get an EMO, that they should have to consider or receive at least three bids. These are, these are pretty common sense, sensible ideas, I think. But as we've seen, we've got the, the cart is in front of the horse, the EMO is starting the school, it's finding a list of people, sometimes employees, that will serve on the board. They give that list of board members to the authorizer who anoints them and makes them a public entity, and then, you know, the board, the first thing they're signing is the management agreement and often a lease agreement. And so we think that's really hard for a board to be signing these agreements when they don't fully understand. So we think the board should have training before they sign any contracts, and we also recommend that authorizers, in addition to the charter school boards, should have to approve any of these big contracts, like the management agreement, and like the lease agreements. We should have stringent requirements for transparency reporting. In other states, especially in Ohio, we've had lawsuits where the charter school boards can't even get the EMO to give them details on the budget and how, where the money's going, and this is really problematic. We also suggest, right now, the federal government is giving a lot of money directly to these, especially the nonprofit EMOs, and we think they should empower and directly fund the independent EMOs, because that, they embody the idea of charter schools. They're locally-run, innovative, and they're autonomous. One last recommendation that we have, and that deals with sweep contracts, and these are things, National Heritage Company was the, one of the first EMOs to use this, and many others, nonprofit and for-profits have been adopting this type of contract. Basically, the contract says, you know, we're going to run the whole school, and all public monies that come in will be switched over to a new bank account on a specific day of the month, and that at the end of the year, the school board will be guaranteed like a 2% or 3% year-end balance. So a small part of the reserves will remain at the school, but all the money gets swept to the EMO, who decides how much to give for the management fee, how much to give to the administrator, how much to pay for their teachers, how much to pay its subsidiary that owns the building, how much, you know, the board doesn't get to see any of that. They just see it at the end of the year, yep, we got that year-end balance, so I guess everything's okay. This type of contract is really detrimental for transparency purposes, and it undermines the authority of the boards. We think this is something that should be really easy to agree on and hopefully take action on. So these are some measures that we think that can shift the balance to push more power back into the school board's hands, especially in the case of charter schools, and also to ensure more transparency. And I think having stronger boards in this way is going to be helpful for the charter schools. And, you know, in the future, it may be necessary to consider what other states have done, like California and Tennessee, there's a couple others that have traditionally not allowed for-profits, but states that we're seeing that had for-profits and now are restricting them, and now some of those states are even looking at more restrictions on the nonprofit EMOs. That's a little bit extreme, but it's something, you know, in Michigan, where now we're approaching 90% of our students in schools that are privately owned and operated. Maybe it's time we think about some restrictions and safeguards, so that we can have the shell or the kernel of that charter school ideal still intact. Thank you for your attention, and I think we have some time, so I'd love to answer some questions.
Thank you, Professor Miron. Board members, if you have a question or a comment, and you would like to join us in the virtual line for those questions or comments, if you could so indicate in the chat, that would be great. President Olbridge, a comment or a question, followed by Ms. Lipton.
Yes, so thank you very much for presenting today. I know you've been doing this work for a long time. How long have you been studying the charter schools?
Charter schools since 1997, but before that, I spent 10 years evaluating voucher reform. But before that, I spent 10 years evaluating voucher reforms and school restructuring in Europe. So when I came to Michigan in 1997, that was the first contract I had was working with the Michigan Department of Ed. But yeah, it's, it was a pretty exciting time to come and see this new reform that was going to be very different than the voucher reforms that I had been studying in Europe.
Great. So basically, since the beginning, you've been in Michigan, kind of looking at charter schools. And every year you guys do. And I, I think it's safe to say it's, it's kind of an academic exercise, but there's obviously some potential policy implications to the work that you do. And, and as such, I imagine it's important for you to have the most accurate information. And sometimes that can be challenging, getting that information, right?
Especially from the, the, the schools themselves that are operated by these private entities. Yeah, we get the data from Michigan, like we're really dependent on the state education agency sites. But when we need data from the schools and we send the FOIA request, we get very poor responses. About 20% respond positively to our requests for, under the Freedom of Information Act.
So, um, so I want to focus on that for a minute. You know, you talked about the sweep contracts, which basically means that all of the, the entire budget essentially goes to the EMO. And I read your report. And in your report, you talk about, you know, certain things that you need to determine whether or not, what is the nature of the relationship between the EMO? Is it a vendor? Is it an EMO? And things that you are looked for, according to your report, are things like, you know, who, who established the school and submitted the charter application? Who owns the facilities? And is there a relationship between the EMO and the leasing company? Who owns the materials and equipment? Who employs the teachers? They, these all seem like pretty reasonable questions to ask of an entity that is essentially functioning on public money. And I noticed in your report, it says that you do send out these FOIA requests to the public school boards and, and sometimes to the districts. And you typically receive less than a 30% response to the FOIA requests, even though the public charter schools are required to respond to FOIAs. But the EMOs, since they're private companies, they cannot be compelled to share information about their operations, products, major customers, clients, and services. And, and you also mentioned that when you sent FOIAs to public charter school boards, it's common for you to actually get a response from the EMO as opposed to the board essentially saying you're not entitled to this information. Is that accurate to say?
Yeah, basically about 20% give us what we ask for. Another 10% respond and say, we, we don't have to give that to you. We won't. And then 70% silence, no response at all. So that's, that's how it shakes out.
So we often hear from charter organizations that they are just as financially transparent as traditional public schools. So would you, in your, in the work that you've done with schools across the board, would you say that's accurate?
Not at all. And I've, I've served as an expert witness for some of these lawsuits between the charter school boards and their EMO in other states. This is, that's not true. It's, they're not more transparent.
Okay, I, I'll have more, more to say in a bit, but I'm going to stop there and let my other board members weigh in.
Thank you, President Olbridge. Ms. Lipton and then Dr. Pugh.
Thank you, Dr. Miron. The question I have is, is related to a comparison, if you will. So as an academic, if you were seeking information about a, a non-charter, well, let me backtrack. So through the course of today's meeting, we've been hearing a lot of reports on data collection. And it's particularly relevant to what I'm going to call public schools. And the term of art I'm talking about is non-charter public schools. A public school model that, that some refer to as traditional public schools. I like to use the term of, I don't like to call charter schools public schools. I like to call them publicly funded, privately operated schools. But I'm going to use the dichotomy that I think a little bit more, you know, thrown around, traditional public schools and charter schools. So in the traditional public school category, a lot of the data we've talked about today, presumably as an academic, if you wanted to, you or, or if anyone wanted to know about the finances of a traditional public school, presumably that would be readily available. You wouldn't need to do a FOIA for that. Is that right?
Yes, it's within, maybe not the most recent year. You can't get right away, but you can get the data pretty detailed within, in the second year after it was reported. And I, I think you can get also from audits and other things from the school districts themselves. I'm not an expert in that. And I always go to the state education agency websites and get the data from there.
Right, so, so SEPI, for example, would be one, one entity within the department that is assembling a lot of data and, and an academic and frankly, anyone without a FOIA would be able to get that information. Is that, is that your understanding?
That's correct.
Yes. But with respect to this, this entity of charter schools, regardless of the, the structure, whether it's nonprofit or for-profit, it sounds to me like you had to go through some, some hurdles, whether it was a FOIA. And, and, and when a FOIA was, was, was not responded to, there really wasn't any, sort of the, 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 the trend line stopped there, if you will. If, if they were not willing to provide the information via the FOIA, there was really, there's the road stopped there. The information cannot be had by you or, or really anybody else, like a parent, for example.
And we had no, we don't have the resources for legal action against so many charter schools. So of course, 70%, we heard nothing. And there's 20% that gave us an outcome that should have been contested, but we didn't have the resources to contest those denials of our FOIAs. But, but, but yeah, basically we, there's nothing we, we could do. But I mean, there was, if you have resources, you can pursue legal action and force them to give you the documentation. That was not the, we weren't able to do that for this study.
Right, right. Yes, thank you for clarifying that. In order to deal with a non-responsive FOIA, you would have had to essentially taken each one of these entities to court. And presumably, a parent or, or anyone wanting that information that didn't have the information responded to by a FOIA, they would have to go to court as well and find those resources.
Correct. Any citizen can do that, but you also have to have the resources.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation, Dr. Miron.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh?
I'm Dr. Rice, here. Miron, thank you for this presentation. And this is some interesting data. I had seen it, I saw the report, I mean, a little while ago. And actually, I'm not sure if you're familiar or if you were a part of any of, or gave input to the Michigan Department of Civil Rights or the Michigan Civil Rights Commission when they were requesting that 25% of the funding allocation remain with the home school of children. And the charter schools were very upset about that. I'm not, were you able to give any input to?
I was not involved in that, no.
Okay. It was, we, I, I was hurt heavily. And I know that the department was pressured as well as the Civil Rights Commission when they, they did that. And the, it was from the charter schools. And what they presented was that they are as transparent as any other traditional school. I'm with, with Ellen on that. But that they are as transparent. And what you presented is far from the truth. So I was just wondering if you gave any input of their, they even questioned my, as well as the civil rights, whether or not we were discriminating, discriminating against schools or children, black and brown children. And my other question to you is if you looked at who the charter schools are serving and what type of communities and what would be the impetus behind the schools that, that, that would be served, the communities that would be served? And if your report looked at all at, if there were special education students? So hopefully you understood that, that question because those were some other things that came out or came up as a related to the Civil Rights Commission and their call for 25% of funding remaining with the local, with the home school district.
No, we have, we have done some research, not in these particular reports, but earlier national study on these EMOs and the students they enroll. And we found that about a quarter of the nation's charter schools have demographics in terms of race, ethnicity that are similar to their local district. Twenty, and, but only a quarter. But you know, two thirds of the schools have populations of students in their schools that are very different, which by different, we mean more than 10 percentage points difference. So we saw clear evidence in our report of, of what many people said, oh, it's going to happen, white flight. White, white families are going to leave diverse schools. What we have found in our earlier study was that's true. But also minority families, black and brown families, leave diverse schools and go to schools that are more, more isolated in terms of children of the same ethnic background. So that's pretty much equal in both directions. We saw the same thing when we looked at the percent free and reduced lunch. We saw it also where some, some schools were much more segregated, high income and other schools segregated, low income. So there are self-sorting. We saw when we look at ELL, English Language Learners and Special Ed, the same effect even more extreme. In the nation as a whole, we have about 80 charter schools that are very, that, that have very high populations proportions of students with disabilities. Most of them have very low proportions of students with disabilities. So they're segregated, you know, against children with disabilities. And when they do have children with disabilities, they tend to be less costly to remediate disabilities. But there are some, a small number, like 80 in the country, of charter schools that are highly segregated with only, or, or, you know, a very, very extreme population of children with IEPs or disabilities. So what we see the charter schools doing as a mechanism is in terms of a means for sorting our population, fragmenting our school population. And our report did that in a national study. There's been several other studies that have confirmed the same thing. And when we look at virtual schools, we're seeing a similar thing. Virtual schools tend to have fewer children of lower income backgrounds, fewer minority students and fewer children with disabilities in the virtual schools. So we're seeing that effect. So the district schools, you know, they educate anybody and everybody that shows up at the door at any time of the year, they show up at the door. So we can look at all this segmenting and self-sorting that's going on. But we also have to think, when we look at the equation, was what's going on with the districts and how are they being impacted by this, these shifts? What's happening to their population that remains and how does that look? So this is something we've studied elsewhere, not in this particular report. But I think that's something that's been well studied, you know, by academics across the country.
And I, I really wish that the Department of, or the Civil Rights Commission would have consulted with you, especially with the charter school advocates definitely pushing this misinformation that, that around the, the transparency, which is not true. And the other question, just one other question that I had to my other question, because I've also read that charters have been incentivized to place their schools within districts or within urban areas or areas where they service minority or disadvantaged children. And that there's incentives for doing so.
Right, there's a number of factors that come into play when they look at where to locate a school. Sometimes a company wants to keep a low profile, so they try to set up where they can draw students from two or three different districts and not have a big impact on any particular district, but still gather up the students they want for, for the, to create the economies of scale they need for that building. So that, there's a lot of things that go into that decision about where to locate, including issues about, you know, where they want to draw their students, but also about the fundings, the funding that will be available. On the, on the transparency part, I think there's something that's, I just want to mention that. Another fact about that is when we look at these management agreements, it, it, you see that the buildings, the facilities are all privately owned and sometimes at the end of the lease to the charter school, that the charter school has to buy the equipment. It's, it's crazy when you look at all these things. But one of the things that I found most bizarre is the proprietary nature of anything created by teachers, which is also a common thing in these management agreements. So, so the teachers are private employees of the management company. They belong to the management company and not to this charter school board. There are a few states that require the teachers to be employees of the charter school board, not the management company. But that's uncommon in Michigan, that's, it doesn't happen. So, but when we look at these management agreements, it says that the teachers, anything they create, extracurriculum or anything is proprietary in nature. When we look at this, we see that the, the name of the school is proprietary. It's very hard for charter school boards to break away from their management company unless they shut down the school. And that happens sometimes. But it's really hard because some of them also have competition clauses about teachers. The teachers can't, if they leave, the management company leaves they, or if they leave the management company, they can't compete and work with the school. So you can't just say, hey, teachers, we're going to fire the management company. Come back and we're going to hire you all back and let's, let's get business going without the management fees, without the transparency issues. It doesn't, when you look at these contracts, they're very well thought out and they are not very transparent. But it also makes it really hard for boards to part ways with management companies.
Wow.
Dr. Pugh, any other questions?
No.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan and then Ms. Lipton.
Okay, yeah, thanks for coming and presenting. I, I hear a lot about inequity over the many years that I've been on the board. There's a severe inequity in funding for charter schools. Usually reports are about 20 to 30% less than public schools. Do you think that they should be getting more money so that there's, so we close the inequity gap? Or should there remain the inequity that is currently there as far as not being able to have millages? You know, the severe inequity with public, traditional public schools? Do you think there should be closing that inequity gap or is that a good inequity?
Well, when we're talking about inequity, you're talking here about revenues coming, the funding coming in. In terms of revenues, you're, you're right. It's about 20 to 30% less money that charter schools receive per pupil than traditional public schools. And that's varies from state to state, but it's pretty consistent. There's good news. Charter schools can get more money. But they have to. The, what I'd say is that what we see is that the funding formula is being applied equally. But like virtual schools don't get all, as much money as brick and mortar charter schools, even though they're funded with the same funding mechanism, in part because there's transportation funds or is what we call categorical funds that they can't apply for because they don't provide those services. We've looked at, in Michigan specifically, in a 2002 study we did on, on the brick and mortar charter schools compared to traditional public schools. And we saw just that over 20% less money per pupil. But we actually calculated that with the cost advantages of charter schools, they were receiving more money than they should.
Well, what do you mean advantages?
Well, they, they, the biggest thing is special ed. Like this is where if charter schools enroll more children with disabilities and more children with severe or moderate disabilities, they will get more money. That's most, most of the difference, that 20 to 30% difference is accounted for by special ed funding and then supplemental services and student support services, those three categories.
Yeah, I think, you know, schools that have more special ed kids should certainly get more funding. But I'm glad that you, you know, want charters to, you know, close that inequity gap and that the state should be giving them more. You know, I guess when we step back and look at things, you know, the fact, you know, we can say how bad things are and all that. But the fact is tons of parents are choosing this option. They're not being forced, as long as, as far as I know, right? They're not being forced to go to charter schools or virtual schools. The fact is, is that they must not be be happy with their their home school or home district. Or I've heard, I've heard some on the left say that these parents are being tricked or they're dumb. Uh, you know, I reject that and I I hope they do. They would as well when they think about it. But, you know, I I I think that, you know, the fact is, is that tons of parents are not happy. I think that during this pandemic, we've certainly seen districts do a horrible job uh and that choice, we I think this is highlighted even more, the cho- the importance of choice. Maybe we need to expand choice. Um, so that especially, like I said, what what this pandemic has shown is that uh being forced into a district that is just not doing a good job at all or a school is is horrible. And so, you know, I just um, I I guess I'm just uh glad that that parents have choices. Uh, the parents that are choosing, you know, we know that the state does a really bad job of tagging schools or grading schools. And so, you know, we can say they're, you know, not doing well at this or that, but we know that A, the school, the state doesn't do a good job with of grading and B, for some reason, uh, and I hope nobody's going to say their parents are being tricked or dumb, they're choosing these schools. So they must love, they must like them. They must appreciate the choice. They must not be happy with the their their homeschool.
Yeah, that's a really good point. And as a from a policy perspective, I, you know, there's, there's four models for accountability. There's the market accountability that you're talking about, parents voting with their feet and satisfaction and stuff of the clients. There's regulatory accountability. Are they following the rules? Are they, you know, implementing the program as a school programs as anticipated? There's a uh performance accountability, looking at the outcomes. And yeah, these systems that we have in the states are kind of arbitrary. Um, they're not perfect, um, but they are a mechanism for measuring performance. There's another part is professional accountability. We don't talk about that much, uh, but it's like where the teachers uh are involved in ensuring that the profession is up to standard. But those three main kind, if we look at virtual schools and I and I, I, it's easier for me to pick at virtual schools as an example, but with market accountability, or we already know with the performance accountability, I mean, the Stanford study found that these schools were losing an equivalent of one year of instruction compared to matched students in traditional brick and mortar schools, one year of instruction for every year they spent in the virtual school. 180 days of instruction, they said, that's, that's what is being lost by these children for every year. And there were one year intervals where they, and this is a national study. Um, that was pretty devastating. Um, the performance accountability is not good.
So why would the parents do that then? They must.
Well, they don't. They don't. Frankly, they don't. And here's the other part of the evidence. In 2012, when we 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 called out K-12 on their their performance and K-12 responded in their 2013 annual report, K-12 Incorporated is the biggest for-profit EMO out there. And K-12 said, you can't hold us accountable accountable for outcomes because two thirds of the students don't stay for two years. Now, there's been state audits um that have shown, like in Colorado, 50% of the students move out of the virtual school within the school year. So there's enormous parent voice. Market accountability is negative. Performance accountability is negative. But these companies have found because of their lucrative nature of these, these types of uh schools they operate, they can invest in recruitment and advertisement and replace all those students and add more. So when we look at that, there are, there's a lot of student churn in the virtual schools. The parents are voting with their feet or, you know, the the children aren't staying, but they're being replaced. And every year they grow, that that sector grows.
That's clever to switch to virtual schools, but we're talking charter schools and that's not the case.
It is. It's not not certainly it's not as extreme. It certainly is not as extreme.
Yeah.
Um. I didn't. Was there anything pending?
I'm done.
Okay.
Michael Rice? So I I'm just going to step in then.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I I momentarily disappeared. I did the the self-mute. Let's get uh, let's get Mr. Strayhorn in for a first bite and Ms. Snyder and then back to Ms. Lipton and Dr. Pugh for second bites. Mr. Strayhorn.
Okay. Gary, thank you for the presentation. It's very informal, informative, informal. Uh, I had a question for you in regards to the the when you're talking about the virtual and blended learning schools ratings, you know, the the performance from 2018 to 2020. And you you outlined that, you know, the acceptable rating uh for the virtual schools was at 17% and blended was at 0%. Do you have any context as compared to the traditional schools, what those ratings are?
I don't. And that I think in the state, we have some average scores that, but I didn't calculate averages. We're trying to break into this acceptable unacceptable breakdown so that we can, we could compare to other states. Um, so I don't know. I think it should be pretty easy to look at the state average ratings that were assigned and then look at the average, uh, the weighted average for the virtual schools and the blended learning schools. Um.
And the graduation rates are at 45%, is that?
That I think that was correct. And in this, nationally, it's 85%. And I think Michigan is pretty similar to the national average on graduation rates.
Yeah.
So it's about, um, those schools are doing about half as well as what uh the the overall public school sector is doing.
Okay. All right.
Mrs. Strayhorn, other questions?
That's all I had. I mean, really, there's a statement I had. I mean, it seems that, you know, when you talk about parents moving from one school system to another, I mean, I think as human beings, we're all have, we have this desire within us to have, you know, look for the grass being greener on the other side. But when you've been sold a bill of goods and you see the performance of the other yard being not as green as it was told to be, maybe that's why you get the people leaving and and the uh record numbers that you're saying, um, the alarming numbers. You say people don't make it a full year. You know, a lot of them don't make it two years uh when in these systems and they come back to the traditional education system.
And that's compared to the virtual school sector, which is performing, the virtual charter schools are performing much worse than the brick and mortar charter schools. And they're much more controversial. And we've seen even the national organizations for charter schools trying to distance themselves from the virtual charter schools, uh, asking that they be legislated under a different framework. In other other words, don't let them call themselves charter schools. Um, so I, it's fair to say, you know, virtual schools are a lot more controversial and the behavior and the outcome disparities are much more drastic there than what we see in brick and mortar charter schools.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Strayhorn. Ms. Snyder, a a statement and then uh back for second bites, Ms. Lipton and Dr. Pugh.
Hi, um, I was glad I was able to join. Um, but I know it's a it's somewhat of a politically charged topic, so um, I will try to keep it light. I just am curious because I didn't get to see the full um presentation. So the focus when we say transparency for charter schools, are we are we are we focusing mostly on finances? Is that is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, no. Also, in terms of like the FOIA request to find out about um lease agreements and and the relationships between different nonprofit and for-profit organizations, um, that's uh much of it there. But that the, yeah, that's probably the the biggest concern. But also the transparency in terms of the charter school boards having access to information themselves so that they can oversee the management agreement and the management company, uh, which is difficult to do when you have the sweep contracts.
Okay. So not necessarily performance transparency. Um, I would echo some of the things that Tom said, but before I get there, um, I'm also curious because you mentioned like special education students, if those schools had more of those students, they would have more money. Um, what's interesting about that discussion, which I've had at this board many times, is trying to figure out how to really track the dollars for special education students to that student and how they serve that student. But anytime we go in that discussion, when we're talking traditional public schools, it's like, hold on, those dollars don't actually follow the student. So it's it's hard. Sometimes when this discussion is going on, I always have this feeling that's like, hold on, you know, until we can, if we can't track those dollars in a in a traditional public school, it just seems disingenuous to then say charter schools could have more money if they would take on special education students. I just don't, it doesn't sit well, um, when we can't track those dollars and how they're really serving that student and what that student needs when they're in um the public school, traditional public school as well. So that's somewhat of a statement and inquiry which I've had ongoing. Um, and it's just, it can be frustrating. Um, the only other thing I would kind of, I would kind of echo that Tom said is that parents are definitely choosing charter schools. And if you go to Michigan Charter's um Association, they're they're clear about why that might happen. And and just to challenge a little bit, the idea of the grass isn't always greener on the other side. The data that they show, it is. Um, when you go to a charter school, reading skills, math proficiency increases significantly. And that's data from Detroit in 2017. Um, I think that is a positive thing. I don't think it's a negative thing that we want to hijack and and hide. Um, and maybe those aren't the best words to use when I'm describing it. But when I see what they have to do in terms of of transparency, especially on behalf of children and parents, um, they are transparent about academic performance. They they participate in the transparency dashboard that we voted on as a board um in the last four years and and they are held to the same exact academic standards that traditional public schools are. If you look at um some of the data that they share, um, it's it's significant, the increase. Um, I I think it's positive to to allow them to continue to breathe and and operate and and do better as well. So that that'll be what I add. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Snyder. Um, Professor Muren, do you do you have anything to share before we go to the next question?
Yeah, I I nail comes. There's been lots and lots of studies over the years. I've been involved in conducting several of these evaluations on on performance. The most rigorous studies of, you know, $3.1 million study commissioned by the U.S. Department of Ed with uh students randomly assigned to charter or district schools, very, very rigorous scientific exam uh study, found charter schools as a whole, the students had a slight disadvantage compared to the students that didn't get into the schools as a lottery. Um, the other big study, Stanford did a really comprehensive study, including almost every charter school state, following students in one-year intervals. They did this with the virtual school studies, students that I mentioned earlier, but they also did earlier some national studies on charter schools. And they found that the difference between the students that attend charter schools and and district schools, when controlling for everything, because it's kind of random assignment through their lottery process. But they found that basically there was an effect size of 0.025, which is so small a difference that you cannot, statistically, we say it's not interpretable. So they're performing almost identical, according to the Stanford study, when we control for um, you know, demographics and then also the students starting test score at to the second test score. Um, so I mean, there's lots of studies, um, you know, don't look at my my research, don't look at the the advocacy group's research, but look at these really highly rigorous studies. And what we've done over the years, we've also tried to compile and synthesize all the evidence across many different studies. And we usually find that there's, you know, some are slightly positive for charter schools, some slightly positive for traditional public schools. There's not a big difference after we control for demographics and for their performance level when they enter. So um, yeah, that's just, that's what what the evidence says.
So what would you, I mean, just just as a, uh, help me to interpret this data that they advertise on their association website. It says, when it comes to critical third-grade reading achievement, 9.8% of DPS CD students were proficient compared to 21.3% of charter students and 46% of students statewide. You feel like that is not statistically significant?
I, no, I don't. I haven't seen the report. I don't know their methods. Um, I would want to look at the methods and understand how rigorous this is. And is this the only indicator or are we just cherry picking some indicators? But I know when I look at the body of evidence, the more rigorous studies, they find there's nothing. But you know, if you go to these virtual schools, they're all showing that that disastrous outcomes. But you can still go to the um websites of these companies and they're going to, they're going to share with you evidence about how successful they are. I don't always believe that. I mean, you have to be critical about that. But um, but I mean, yeah, there's a lot of evidence. It's hard to tease through through it all. But I think, I think, um, you know, in the academic community, we are mostly agree that it depends. I mean, the the difference is so small, it's often uninterpretable and it depends on the state. Um, some of my state evaluations uh for the Departments of Ed in Connecticut and Delaware, I found an advantage for charter schools and I was criticized by the public school establishment. Um, but it was a small difference and advantage for the charter schools in Pennsylvania and Illinois and Ohio and Michigan, we had slightly negative findings and I was criticized by the other side there. Their differences are pretty small over times. Uh, but that's just where the evidence is. And uh, yeah.
Thank you, Professor Muren. Uh, Ms. Lipton and then Dr. Pugh.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Muren. Um, I just want to focus again on the ease with which um data is able to be collected because I think that I don't think that your your excellent testimony was really disputing the fact that Michigan parents have a multitude of choices um and have had a multitude of choices um uh in terms of different ways of educating their children. In fact, in the morning session, uh, this board approved a resolution reiterating the fundamental right of a parent and their legal guardian guardian to have um choices over the the direction of their child's education. So uh, so despite um sort of uh stray comments to that effect, I I just want to direct you back to um your test, your excellent testimony with regard to the ease with which um you and and by extension, perhaps a parent would be able to um get information uh with respect to um the uh charter schools. Um, preliminary question, um, would you agree that having full and complete information is a component of a a parent or an academic or really anyone making an informed decision uh about charter schools?
Yeah. And I'll take this to the international research. It's it's similar, what we see. I mean, in in an economic theory too, in order for, you know, market theory to work in the education setting, it assumes that parents will have perfect information because if parents don't make good choices, we're going to be rewarding producers that aren't always the best. And you go to the marketplace, you're going to buy the farmer who's got the nice apples without markings or or worms, you know, and you're going to reinforce that producer. And the same principle happens in the education marketplace, that families need good information. And this is a weakness with school reform models around the world, um, or school choice models, because if it's, it's often that parents uh don't have good information or the parents that get good information are are sometimes the parents who have better education background or uh available time and resources to to do, to find out that information and make the best choices. And so for the marketplace to work, we really need all parents to have access to information. There's been some excellent models here in the Michigan, in the in the states, uh, New York City, some other cities where they have uh various school choice options. Everything, families apply to a central uh entity that has information, fair, you know, neutral information provided by information provided by a neutral entity as and then parents get to select their preferences. And um, it just tries to level the playing field in terms of the information uh available to to consumers, i.e. the parents. Uh, and and also then it has a a way that they regulate the lotteries uh where where students get assigned. So those are nice things that work um in a few communities. But I, in terms of market theory and why market, market uh theory would work in education, it assumes that everybody's going to have access to that information. They're going to make good market decisions so that we can drive the like companies like K-12 Incorporated, they should be out of business and their stocks go up every year on what their outcomes that they perform. But it's other factors, um, you know, that are, so it's, it's a good point. Um, but it's hard to get good information available to all parents so they can make the right decision uh based on their child's learning styles and other factors.
Thank you. Thank you very much for um for that. And and then just uh to um to uh uh go a little further, um, would you agree that a uh component of good information, um, uh, if you will, is the ease with which uh an academic, a parent, or really any member of the public can can get that information? Uh, because as you testified earlier, um, it sounds to me like, um, at least in your instance, um, you might have even had to go to court and assemble those recent. might have even had to go to court and assemble those resources in order to get not just good information, but really any information from a large percentage of the organizations that you were looking at. Is that, is that, is that, is that fair?
Yeah, and, and you know, a lot of the parents aren't going to be looking for the information that I'm looking for in terms of contracts and relationships with different entities. But the parents are going to see information on websites and so forth. But if you have a child with special needs, you're going to want to know more than what, what the brochure says. You're going to want to know how have other children with disabilities fared at, at school and so forth. And that stuff is harder to tease out. But it's, um, yeah, it's, I mean, it's a fair point, but it's also, like I said, and I, my, my children, we shopped around, my, my boys went to a magnet school in Kalamazoo. We shopped around, we looked at the evidence and so forth, and there was some good information. But it's like, it's mostly you rely on what's on the websites, what's in the brochure, and also what you hear from other, other friends and family for recommendations. But, um, but it would be nice to see a system where there's a clearinghouse where more perfect information could be provided by a neutral entity about the schools. And also that same entity would be controlling that whole lottery process and assigning students based on their preferences.
Thank you so much. What, just one final question with respect to the issue of sweep contracts. I want to make sure that I understand, is it your understanding that, that if a large educational management organization or charter management organization that owned a number of schools, perhaps even schools in different states? Is it your understanding that a sweep contract would not allow the, the study of whether money was being moved among entities or schools within that larger EMO or CMO network?
I, I really don't think that without a pretty serious legal engagements that you can get access to that information. The lawsuits that have been fought by charter school boards, they are dealing with, uh, like information like just not the transfer of monies from different entities, but just the, the, the detailed budget for the, and this was, uh, the lawsuit in Ohio went on for about three and a half years with white hat schools. And in the end, after several appeals, the courts did rule in favor of the charter school boards and said the company had to tell the board how the money was being spent in terms of salaries and things, expenditures on the school itself for the education. It didn't, uh, it didn't demand that the company talk about the private side of the business, but how it was spending on behalf of the school. And that year that the, the appeal was finally defeated and the court said, you know, that the boards had the access from, that's when they start selling all their schools to, Acel Schools. So the, the owner then just started selling his charter schools and getting out of the business. And now Acel has taken them over, which also owns and operates several charter schools here in Michigan. And that's, by the way, it's a, a company that was started by the former head of K-12 Incorporated. Fascinating little story. And now they've got a foothold here in Michigan and are growing, mostly through purchasing of nonprofit and for-profit schools.
So, thank you. So just to be, so just to be clear, even a board by reviewing a sweep contract that they signed might not even know the exchange of money happening perhaps at the EMO level on the observation of, of that sweep contract.
That is correct. And, and so much of the money, like for the virtual schools, will go back to the mother company through the local nonprofit, to the for-profit, then back to the, the headquarters. And, um, it's, we don't know what happens to it. We know, like, we know, like, K-12 Incorporated spends a 30, 30%, one-third less than brick and mortar charter schools on special ed, even though they have more children with special, special needs. We don't know. We know the money goes back to Herndon, Virginia, to the headquarters, but we don't know if they've got some new algorithm or new software program that they're spending on it to deliver special ed. We don't know. And we've tried to find that out, but it's, once it goes to the beyond the, the school expend, direct expenditures, it's really hard to track, impossible almost.
Thank you, Dr. Muirin. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Lipton. Dr., uh, Dr. Pugh, Ms. Tilly for a first bite, and Mr. Strayhorn for a second.
Ms. Tilly can go ahead since it's her first bite.
Ms. Tilly, then, I had already called on Dr. Pugh, but Ms. Tilly, you jump on for your first bite.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. I know you mentioned special education funding. From my experience, charter schools, a lot of charter schools don't offer a lot of IEP services for students. Do you have any information or data on that in comparison to traditional public schools?
Anecdotally, there's been the cases, and there's been some lawsuits that get settled out of court about counseling out students. And there's been a federal study on counseling out of students. One of the problems with charter schools to deliver special ed, I mean, they have, I mean, they get more money if they serve more children with disabilities, especially severe and moderate disabilities. That's how the funding formula is going to work. They can get more money. But it's hard for a small, a, a charter school in Michigan is its own district. It's an LEA. It's hard for them to deliver a service. Like, in a, a regular school district, you know, it doesn't require that every school delivers special ed services to every child. Districts are the provider of special ed. They have the luxury, and luxury in a way, that cost efficiency equation that they can decide, we're going to chill, all the children with this type of disability, we're going to serve them all across the district at this school. And they can sort and organize their special ed services so they're cost efficient. Charter schools struggle with that, because if they get two children with a specific type of disability, you know, they may not have the resources to hire the teacher to, to serve them adequately. What, what, uh, the, the feds have done a lot to support charter schools is creating the networks and combined services so that as groups of charter schools can share special ed teachers and other things, so they can have some of the advantages that districts have when it comes to delivering special ed services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh to you, and then Mr. Strayhorn.
So I, just going back to some of the questions that Tom raised and some of the thoughts that he raised, just wanted to point out that I don't think that any of us think that on this call, as a this body, think that parents are dumb. I think when we talk about the issue of choice, we're not only talking about, you know, our parents getting the real picture, is, is a charter able to better market to certain parents, but is it really a choice? You know, many of these communities, the school, because of the financial imbalance that's caused by this musical chairs and by the opening and closing of schools, charter school proliferation, we see traditional public schools being shut down in neighborhoods. And oftentimes, that may be one of only or one of a few schools that, that are there for, for parents to attend. I know that here, there was a school that dissolved, and so there was a building that was up for sale. There was a charter school, a company that wanted to go into that school building, but they were waiting to see if the local, the LEA closed before they, they would open. So there's just, you know, it's, this whole issue of choice is not always real. The other point that I just want to mention is, again, to Tom's point around getting the funding to classrooms, getting the funding to students, getting the funding to, to teachers. And that is, that, that's my goal too. I think that that's all of our goal, making sure that we stop this financial instability. And to Dr. Muirin's testimony, as Ellen has called it, I would like to know if we are able to look at the sweep contracts or to look at the data that you say that, that you can't get to, people are having a difficult time getting to. If we look at that data, are you, oh, I see you smile, but if we, I was hoping I wasn't on mute. If we're looking at the data, are we, um, are we going to find that money that's going to a profit margin could be going to the classroom? And that was the point raised around the charter commission, um, uh, report, is that 25% that is, that remain, that's taken from possibly a charter school, could that money come from that private, that money that's going to this private entity that's lining the pockets of a profiteer? And could that money go into the classroom, to Tom's point?
Yeah. And you do estimate where some, there have been federal indictments and investigations into these types of things where people have been enriching themselves. It's harder sometimes to tease that out. I mean, this corruption happens in traditional public schools as well. Because of transparency, we usually have better tools for identifying and, and, and collecting evidence to verify that. But it's been harder in some of the charter school world. Back to your other point about choice and what's out there. There's a great study from Michigan State University looking at what happens to districts with competition. And they looked at Metro Detroit, and they found that after about 6% to 7% of the students leave a traditional public school for competition to either charter or the school's choice program, schools of choice, that they tend to go into a negative spiral. And that causes a lot of families, they don't know sometimes if the public school will be open next year. And so sometimes their choice isn't driven by, you know, not by information, but because they want to know where the child's going to be enrolled, and they want that security. And we know also, if we look at Metro Detroit today, we have areas with, they're, we refer to them as school deserts. There's no schools around. And then we see several schools collected in one area. And when we see that arrangement of schools, because the traditional public schools are being, being shut down, and they don't have the, and the charter schools still have the freedom of location, but the district tries to map out a logical, you know, set of schools to deliver the services, and it's difficult to do that. And so a lot of times, the only charter school also to pick, only school to pick is the local charter school. You know that it's a better chance that it'll be there and some other things. But, but this, it's, it's, it's more complicated than just information. And I think people make, you know, good decisions. Parents make the best decisions. Sometimes it's based on convenience, sometimes it's based on other information. And you know, some, some parents pick tools, schools, not because they're the highest performing schools, but because they have a learning profile or a profile of the school that fits their, their students' learning styles. There's lots of reasons. So I, I think parents make good decisions. I think they could make better decisions if they had more well-rounded information, and if the districts had a better ability to deliver and provide similar services across their areas. But in the urban areas right now, the public schools are really hurting with decreasing enrollments, increasing proportions of children in poverty, increasing numbers of children qualifying for special ed services. There's a lot of stressors on traditional public schools. And don't even get me started, starting about the future pensions and other things that are going to really weight down and threaten the security of our public school system.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh, Professor Muirin. I am told by, I understand from Board Member Strayhorn that he already got his, all his bites out of the apple, so that's, it's all good. Thank you, sir. And now we're to President Albridge.
Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of wrap up this conversation. First of all, say thank you very much, Professor Muirin, for coming and joining us today. This was very enlightening, and I hope that when your next report comes out in May, you will be sure to send that to the board so we can review that as well. I, we talked a lot about choice today, and in Michigan, unless these numbers have changed, I believe roughly 10% of students, public education students in Michigan attend charter schools. That means 90% of parents that choose a public school for their kid are sending their child to a locally governed, traditional public school. And I would say, regardless of which you choose, neither allows the school to be not non-transparent. And so I think that it doesn't, it, you know, choice is one thing, transparency is another. And I think that no school should forego being accountable to the taxpayers who are ultimately funding all of these schools that we are talking about. So my recommendation would be for the Legislative Committee to look at this issue and determine if there's anything that the State Board of Education should or could be doing to ensure transparency in public education, including in charter schools and cyber schools in the state of Michigan. And then come back to the full board with any potential recommendations. And as you do that, I would just remind you that since I've been on the board, we've had at least a couple of board statements or recommendation, list of recommendations. And I would be happy to locate those and send them to you as well, so that you could see what we had looked at in the past, including one that I believe was in 2014, where we looked at the sweep contract issue, especially as it related to lease contracts. And at the time, said that any school that was engaging in a sweep contract should not be also leasing their own buildings to themselves or to any company in a non-arms-length manner. Obviously, that didn't go anywhere, but I still think it's a highly relevant conversation to have. So that would be my recommendation. And just finally, once again, thank you, Professor Muirin, for your time.
Thank you for having me attend. I really enjoyed this.
Thank you, President Albridge. Professor Muirin, thank you very much. We appreciate your research and your, and your sharing with us. We will be considering this at the next Legislative Committee meeting. We appreciate you engaging us over the last hour and, and change. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
President Albridge, it is to you in the agenda for your report as president. We having already approved our two sets of board meetings from March 9.
Thank you. I will be very brief, because I don't necessarily like beating a dead horse, but I'm going to do it anyway. So I'm going to talk once more about standardized assessments in Michigan. And for those of you who may not have seen it, Dr. Rice and I both drafted an editorial that ran nationally as well as in the state regarding the state's waiver requests. When it comes to data collection, there are two critical considerations. One is validity and the other is reliability. And to be valid, an assessment tool needs to actually measure what it says it intends to measure. And to be reliable, it needs to be both accurate and something that can be replicable for the results. And both this year, in, in my opinion, would definitely be called into question. So obviously, the testing conditions are quite different this year, which can significantly alter the results. And more so, the fact that many students will not take the test because it cannot be delivered remotely will also significantly alter the results, which could be in either direction. Everyone is assuming the results will go in one direction. It could actually go in the other due to some equity issues. And so we saw, I think, from this morning's presentation, that there will definitely be inequitable distribution of test takers. And so the bottom line is, this data is going to be severely flawed, and it should definitely be taken with a grain of salt, if you will. If it's flawed to this level, then I think it stands to reason that it should not be used to punish or reward any students, educators, or schools. And so once again, I want to reiterate the statement from this board from this morning, that various state laws related to retention, educator evaluations, and A through F labels should be suspended for this year, and call on the Legislature to act and act quickly so that this is not something that is hanging over the heads of our, our young people in the state. As a reminder, students are taking benchmark tests this year, so there is information available. And those tests can be taken remotely or in person. So they're going to provide much more accurate and usable information for students, educators, and parents. So it is not, and I have, I'm going to repeat this again, it is not that we are opposed to assessments. We are not opposed to assessments. But there are, when there are consequences that are attached to those assessments, it changes the game completely, and that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, President Albridge. Relative to a report of the superintendent, I got my oar substantially in the water this morning. I would simply say three things and then, and then call on a distinguished guest to share a reflection or two. One, I agree with everything our board president has just said. We fought the good fight relative to the requirement to administer state summatives in a pandemic. We're required to do so. We disagree with the logic associated therewith, but there should be no- But there should be no high-stakes requirements at all associated with those assessments, either federal or state. And the state legislature now needs to do its job quickly or we will have to begin to notify the parents of third graders of the test results of their children and possible retention of their, their children. The legislature needs to move and move expeditiously. So that's number one. I, I note additionally, number two, the rather unusual juxtaposition of one federal agency indicating that we should do state summit of assessments, which can only be done in person, while another state agency a week later suggests that we ought to shut down the state in order to flatten the curve. I'd like to honor those individuals who are or have been recently named regional teachers of the year for the coming school year. Congratulations to them. We look forward to working with them in the coming year. And I know that we have a outstanding committee working on the selection of the Michigan teacher of the year as we speak. Then finally, what I'd like to do is to ask Ms. Brandy Johnson from the governor's office to share just a couple of minutes about the governor's student recovery advisory council work. A board member did ask for an update on that. Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you so much, Superintendent Rice, and thanks for continuing to invite me to sit at this table. I'd be delighted to give you an update about the student recovery advisory council. As you probably remember, earlier this year in the governor's State of the State address, she announced that she was going to reconvene the original members of the return to school advisory council, which had worked during the summer of 2020 to develop a roadmap for how schools might be gave off her face-to-face instruction in a way that is safe and mitigates the spread of COVID-19. That road was released on June 30 of 2020, but that group continued to meet through the end of the calendar year. In her State of the State address, she asked that that group come back a roadmap that focused on recovery and help students recover from the toll of the pandemic, not just academically, but mentally and physically as well. That group was established via executive order. The governor named Sue Ken Polston, the superintendent at Godfrey Lee Public Schools, to serve as the chairperson of the council. Given, Tanya Allen had recently made a professional transition out of state. She had chaired the original council. That group has been meeting and working over the last, to release recommendations about four weeks from now. We're targeting the week of May 10 to release recommendations. The recommendations are primarily targeted at school districts, school leaders and administrators to really develop comprehensive recovery plans for their students, recognizing the new federal resources that are available to support those efforts. The advisory council established a vision to create the conditions for a safe, edible, and high-performance educational system that provides access and opportunity to each child in Michigan and a mission to build clear guidance, including resources and tools, that help school leaders build a cover for a plan that their community trusts. The advisory council consists of 29 members, largely the original members of the return to school advisory council, plus four new members, as well as four led, and then has divided itself into seven subcommittees. One that's focused on academics, one that is focused on student wellbeing, one focused on physical health, one focused on post-secondary transitions, one focused on family and community, and one focused on innovation. Within those subcommittees, we invited other experts from the field to join the members. So in total, there's 80 subcommittee members working on recommendations. And once again, we've, we've partnered with a nonprofit consulting firm called Opportunity Labs to help facilitate the advisory council and bring capacity building to the members. Each week, we've had guest presenters give a national perspective about recovery. And we've invited all subcommittee members to participate in those opportunities to learn from national leaders. In terms of our recommendations, we've developed seven criteria by which our all recommendations need to meet. Student voice must be embedded. It must take a multi-year approach. All strategies must be grounded in evidence. We focus on educator efficacy. The recommendations are prioritized and focused. Equity is visible and a whole child approach. So again, just in terms of timeline, our, we hope to actually start developing the draft recommendations this week with sharing of a draft with the governor on April 30 and then hopefully have a public release by mid-May. And it's been a pleasure to staff the advisory council and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the advisory council.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Any questions for Ms. Johnson? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We appreciate your report. Thank you very much for, for the report. Dr. Pugh, are you, are you getting ready to ask a question?
Just a quick question. What, if you can talk about the two different advisory boards. There was the teacher advisory board and then there's this return to school advisory board. Obviously, I do hear that one was convened as a result of the pandemic. But is there any interaction there?
Yeah, that's a really great question. Yeah, the governor's educator advisory council, so we call it the GAC. The GAC was established in 2019, well before the, anyone dreamed of living through a pandemic. It is meant to be an ongoing table of educators who have a seat at the policymaking table as the governor is considering various education policy. From time to time, we consult with the GAC and then we've asked the GAC to develop recommendations on very specific policy issues. A great example of one is teacher retention and recruitment strategies, which directly led to the governor proposing in her budget dollars to MDE to support various teacher recruitment and retention efforts. Another recommendation that came from the GAC was to establish a state poet laureate. It's another recommendation that the governor has supported. The GAC is exclusively for educators. There's educators at all levels at that table, teachers, a special ed teacher, our teacher of the year, principal, a principal and a superintendent or two superintendents, a counselor, a para pro, et cetera. The, the recovery advisory council, as well as the return to school advisory council, which was much, is and was much broader in its composition to include other experts and stakeholders. So for example, on these advisory councils that are working now or that worked last year and are working now, directly related to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have a pediatrician, a student health, a student mental health expert. We have a philanthropic representative or two. We have the major school partnership represented, et cetera. So it's, it's more inclusive of other experts besides just educators. And again, the mission is much more focused to be directly related to.
And, and Ms. Johnson, you were breaking up there a little bit, but I think I got, I got it for the, the most part. And I guess my only other question, and that's if I missed this, is how the department, if the department has any input on how those bodies are populated. So, you know, the slots here.
Certainly. So with the GAC, with the governor's educator advisory council, it's actually housed in the department and is staffed by Ms. Leah Breen from the department. And so they take quite a leadership role in that. And I just saw Kyle turn on his camera on the other two. The return to school advisory council and the student recovery advisory council. We asked Dr. Rice to participate in the meetings or to designate someone from the department to participate in those meetings. And he designated Kyle Garant. So Kyle Garant participates in every meeting of return to school advisory council and the student recovery advisory council. And then obviously Superintendent Rice and I meet regularly about, weekly to talk updates with what's going on.
And then how do those of us as the state board of education, and I know that the governor appreciates, you know, our role within the constitution, how do we make sure that we're integrating and we're aware of what's, what's coming through that's related to that role?
Yeah. I'm very happy to stay connected. I'd recommend perhaps inviting Mr. Kevin Polston, the chair of the council, to present the recommendations of the advisory council at your next or an upcoming or relates to the return, the student recovery advisory council. Sorry, three councils I'm talking about simultaneously. But as it relates to the student recovery advisory council, the primary audience for the recommendations are school leaders themselves. Unlike the last summer's advisory council, where the recommendations actually drove an executive order that set the rule for how schools may be able to reopen from a health and safety perspective. This time around, the guidance is really truly directed at school leaders. We are such a in local control state that we know that each individual school district needs to design a comprehensive student recovery plan that reflects the needs of that community. And so that is the primary audience. There may be some very high-level policy recommendations, but by and large, the documents that will be released from this council is really focused on guidance directed at school district leaders.
Dr. Pugh, any follow-up?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else from any other board member? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Johnson, thank you so much. And thank you for your service as the governor's representative on the state board. We appreciate it and we appreciate you. We're now pivoting to the report of the Michigan teacher of the year. Mr. Owen Bondano, the 2020, 2021 Michigan teacher of the year will present his report. Mr. Bondano teaches English language arts to freshmen in Oak Park schools. Ms. Janine Scott, Region 10 teacher of the year, is joining us from Detroit Public Schools Community District. She's a math teacher at Davis Aerospace Technical High School. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Teachers of the year, welcome. It is great to have you today.
Thank you very much. As you all know well by now, I'm Owen Bondano, Michigan teacher of the year, and I teach ninth grade English at Oak Park High School. This presentation, I'm joined by Janine Scott, who was one of my professors when I was a undergrad, getting my education degree at Wayne State University. One of the best professors I ever had was Professor Scott. And Professor Scott and I are going to present together today, rather than me giving you some information and then Ms. Scott giving you some information. We're going to instead present together. So I'm actually going to hand the mic over first to Professor Scott.
So hi, everyone. I am Janine Scott, the Region 10 teacher of the year, and I am a math teacher and a teacher coach at Davis Aerospace Technical High School. So that is the airplane high schools. And so I'm really lucky as a teacher because I get to see my students actually fly planes. Super cool. Just a little bit of my background, I am the youngest of six children. I graduated, well, I was born and raised in Lansing, Michigan, and educated in Lansing schools. I went to Willow Street School, bust over to Valley Farm School, went to Otto Junior High and graduated from JW Sexton High. Then I went to the University of Michigan, Go Blue, and got my bachelor's degree in engineering. And I actually was an engineer and a process salesperson for 13 years before I became a teacher. I received my master's in teaching with math and science from Wayne State University. And I'm currently certified EX and DX, so math and science in Michigan. So personally, the reason that I became a teacher was because I want to help students become successful in life. I chose Detroit because I wanted to influence students who look like me and who think like me and who act like me and who are just different because I'm very different. My goal as a teacher is to help shape independent mathematical thinkers that'll make the world a better place. And it was very cool listening to this meeting today because I was listening to numbers, listening to interpretations, listening to all these different things. And when I talk to my students about math, it's more than just algebra or addition and subtraction. It's being able to take information, analyze it, ask intelligent questions, and come up with solutions. And so it was very interesting, especially that last presentation on why I teach math and what I want my students to learn. Lastly, I love math. I love, love, love math. I love science and I love reading. But most importantly, I love my students.
So this presentation that we'd like to give together today came out of many conversations that the regional teachers of the year have had this year about how the pandemic is going to affect education moving forward. And we thought as, as spring is upon us and we're starting to look towards the next school year, this would be a great time for us to think about where do we go from here? How do we move, you know, we've been moving through a pandemic for over a year now. What happens when we finally get to a point from an education standpoint that we are moving beyond the pandemic? What kind of an education shift can we make moving forward?
So as teachers, one of the things that we always do, but it's going to be critically important as we move forward in the pandemic and post-pandemic teaching, is creating these safe spaces for our students. The social-emotional learning component is going to be paramount in allowing our students to continue to progress forward academically. And one way that we can do that is by closing the attitude gap. If you've never heard of the attitude gap, it's the gap between those students who have the will to strive for academic excellence and those who not, who do not. As teachers, we can affect that attitude gap. And if we can close that attitude gap, then the learning, the catching up, the achievement will just follow. One of the ways that we do this is by attacking a stereotype threat. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And also by confidence building in our students. It'll allow our students to move forward past the pandemic and through the pandemic if we do these things.
And one of the most important parts of, of moving forward as educators is becoming educators of critical thinking. Professor Scott and I teach what many people would think of as opposite subjects. You know, the subjects that are sort of as different as they could possibly get. Me, an English teacher, her, a math teacher. But we both believe very strongly in the power of teaching critical thinking to our students and helping, that helps them become more successful adults in the long term. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute.
So this next slide I created because I wanted you to understand what safe spaces can do to our students, for our students, with our students. And these are just little chats that I have with my students. Now granted, I teach math, but we talk about everything. Now, granted, I teach math, but we talk about everything. And during the pandemic, one of the most important things that we talk about is how are you feeling? And how are you going to take what you're feeling and turn it into being a successful student? And so except for the very top quote, all of the quotes that I clipped were actual students commenting on what it means to be a student. And I was just talking to them about, I need you guys, I know you're teenagers, but I need you guys really to be students. And what does that mean to you? And I just wanted to highlight one of them. And it's in the very center from Ms. Murphy. And she talks about being a student means thriving no matter what age or race and knowing that you're not doing it for anyone else so they're willing to learn from the mistakes and always knowing where their education leads and where they will go in life. She said, students have leadership mindsets in every field that they're in. They will try and not ever doubt themselves. They are aware that there will be obstacles and some things cannot change overnight and it's a process. This young lady has been through the wringer during this pandemic, but she keeps coming back. When I say the wringer, I'm talking about everything through COVID. Her mom actually passed Christmas Eve. She keeps coming back and she keeps talking to me about she knows she can do it. And even though she falls, she gets back up and we continue to work. And she is never afraid to say what she doesn't know and to say that she's going to continue to try to get better. The very top one is a comment from my one student who didn't show up for three months. Literally, I didn't see her September, October, or November. And I had to call her and I called her multiple times, but one day she finally heard me. And I said, sweetie, I just need you to come to class. So in my school, I'm known as the tough teacher. And she was scared to come to math. And I said, sweetheart, Ms. Scott doesn't care about how much math you know or how much math you don't know. What I care about is you and I want you to get better in math. So I need you to just come and try. And I promise you, if you come and try, you will learn and you will succeed. And she sent me a note basically saying that she apologized for not being able to understand a process. And I told her, it doesn't matter. You know, I love you and I'm not going to give up on you and I appreciate the fact that you're here. And she wrote me this note back that I love you too. You didn't give up on me, so I'm not going to give up on you and thank you. During this pandemic, when I do this pandemic teaching and I get down, I go right back to lyrics note and I read it. And I'm never giving up on my kids. And I am not the only teacher in the state of Michigan. I gotta believe we're all that way. Pandemic is hard. Learning is hard. And so as we move forward in teaching during the pandemic and beyond COVID, we have got to make sure that we focus on safe spaces and social emotional learning so that our students can succeed. Don't you agree, Owen? Yep. So I talked about the attitude gap. And if you've never heard of it, check out Buruti Cafele and read his book, Closing the Attitude Gap: How to Fire Up Your Students to Strive for Success. Basically, if we believe that our students can achieve, over time, they believe they'll achieve and therefore they succeed. And I just want to tell you a story because I am personally motivated by my teachers. I had two parents. Like I said, I grew up in Lansing, six kids, great family, wonderful childhood, but teachers meant the world to me. But I had this one teacher at Sexton, and I don't know if any of you guys went to JDubs, where I went, but his name was Mr. Norton, and he was the hardest math teacher in the school. Nobody took Mr. Norton. Every single day, he would harass us and say, I care about you kids. I want you guys to do your very, very best. I need you to study. I need you to come help. Come get help if you need help. I'm here in the morning, I'm here during lunch, I'm here during after school because I care about you and you're valuable and I need you to succeed. And I bought it. I bought into that 100%. I never wanted to disappoint Mr. Norton. He closed that attitude gap. I never skipped his class. I'm not saying I skipped because I'm a good teacher, but I never skipped his class. I never ever copied in his class. I always tried my very best and I tried my very best for one reason, because he believed in me and he cared about me and he harassed us every single day and told us every single day. Now, Mr. Norton didn't look like me. He didn't have the same religion as I did. He wasn't even a woman and he wasn't black. But he was just like me because he cared about me and it meant so much to me that I had a teacher that every single day that they told me that they believed in me, that I believed in myself and I believed in achievement. And so now I channel Mr. Norton and every day I tell my students those very same things. I just believe that as a teacher, as we continue to close that attitude gap, as we continue to attack a stereotype threat, we can help our students achieve. And then we don't have to worry so much about their learning loss. So I've been talking a little bit about the stereotype threat. And I don't know if you know what it is, but basically it is the fear or anxiety of confirming negative group stereotypes. Now, this is an exercise that I do with folks all the time and I want to do it with you all, but instead of it being interactive, I just want you guys to think about your answers. I don't want to know them. I want you to think about your answers. And so this is really just something to give you thought. We have stereotypes about everybody, but we have to attack that stereotype threat so we don't put that on our students and so that our students can achieve no matter what. So let's start this exercise. We've got five groups of high school students. They all have equal mental and physical abilities. We've got a group of black boys, a group of white boys, a group of Asian boys, a group of girls, and a group of LGBTQ students. And there are five competitions. So just think about it. Basketball competition, who wins? Apple pie baking competition, who wins? A math aptitude test, who wins? Theater performances, who wins? Future leaders of America, who wins? So the right answer is because they all have equal physical and mental abilities, any of them can win, any of the categories. But if you're honest with yourself, like I'm honest with myself, every single time those stereotypes still push their weight into my brain. When I'm talking to my kids, I eradicate stereotype threat. I let them know that if you have Ms. Scott for math, on the 11th grade test, on the SAT test, my students do better than everybody in the district. That might be a little bit of an exaggeration, but I let them know that if you've got me, I'm the special ingredient outside of you because I'm going to teach you different things that other kids may not know. And they walk in with confidence. I tell my black kids in Detroit Public Schools that you can be president, that you can do whatever you want. I tell my kids who are non-binary that you are perfect the way you are and that I love you regardless of who somebody said you should be. Be yourself and be the best you ever. We have to start attacking the stereotype threat for our kids so we can reduce that attitude gap so that our students can succeed.
And when it comes to what we're teaching them, when we want to address the attitude gap and we want to address that stereotype threat, then we're talking about critical thinking. This is our goal with our students, especially post pandemic. It's increasing their critical thinking. And this is largely, like I said earlier, an interdisciplinary issue because math, science, social studies, English, elective, all of those places are vehicles for teaching critical thinking. We want them to be able to think analytically, to problem solve, to reason and proof their way through problems, to communicate well, to make connections between all the different things that they're studying and representations of those things. We want them to have these skills because we're in this place of a supposed learning loss. But if we focus, if instead of focusing on fully just catching kids up in curriculum, if we are focused instead on increasing their ability to think critically, then they're going to have the kinds of skills they need that they will progress and achieve in even the most adverse of circumstances. It won't matter. And any any catching up and it needs to be done from a learning loss will happen by itself because students will know how to think and they will know how to make those connections and they will become better learners overall. And this is something that we can work on on our own and can be worked on in interdisciplinary way by teachers working together to create places where students are using all of these different skills from all of these different subjects to become critical thinkers. So when we think about moving forward, where are we going? What are the next steps? I think one of the things that's come up repeatedly today during during this meeting has been that we don't know what those next steps are going to look like and what they're going to be. But we believe that pre pandemic teaching is not the answer. I was so thrilled by the public comment we received this afternoon. That teacher said everything that I have also been thinking, that it's not going to be enough to return to what normal used to look like. Instead, we have to figure out what's the best stuff that we had going on before and how can we pair that with all of these new skills and understandings and learnings that we've we've developed over the course of the pandemic? We have to value our teachers' time, help them build spaces where they collaborate with each other and where they encourage students to collaborate with each other as well, and professional development that will help our students best achieve. As we move forward into this, again, post pandemic teaching, whatever this looks like, we have to continue to provide that that SEL support to our students and banish the idea that our students are falling behind. Because either we give our students grace, we support them and we reteach them and we accept that they may be a little behind where they would be during a normal non pandemic year, or we have to try and fast track content and allow some students to fail because they can't keep up with that fast pace during a pandemic. We believe that there is no giving grace and not falling behind. Those two things cannot exist together. And if those two things cannot exist together, we have to figure out what we're prioritizing as we move out of this pandemic. Ms. Scott, anything else you would like to add?
The only thing that I would like to add to that is as we talk about these things for our students, we have to remember that we are talking about our instructors and our teachers too. We have to make sure that our teachers get that time to work together and to collaborate. It really, and thank you, Board, for putting out that resolution. It is scaring the pants off of us, teacher. And I think I'm just one of the best, by or none. And it still scares the pants off me that I'm going to be evaluated when I have students like my sweetie pie who I read to encourage me, but she doesn't show up for three months. What kind of growth can you have if you don't come for three months? She's back in place and she's doing better, but she's probably not where she would have been had school been in session and I'd have been able to get my hands physically on her and work with her. But it, you, how can you rate us like that? So I just appreciate the resolution and just remember as teachers in the process because just like students are important, so are we.
We would now be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Scott and Mr. Bondano. Ms. Tilly, oh, I beg your pardon. Dr. Pugh noted, Go Blue. Clearly not a Buckeye fan. Ms. Tilly, to you for a comment.
First, I want to say thank you guys so much for this presentation. This was one of my concerns pre pandemic. I felt like there were so many things that needed to be changed in the educational system that we were way behind the times, things needed to be transformed. I'm a big fan of self-directed studies. I would love to see that more in the classroom and where students get a chance to actually, you know, pick the project that they want to do. And, you know, if it's time for science, they have five options and they can do the one that they want to do. And that way, they they learn to love learning, you know? They're not just doing it because it's forced upon them and they're not trying to keep up with other students in the classroom. And then the collaboration of student leaders, you know, where students, other students are helping other students, you know, with with projects. So thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Other other board members? Other reflections? I want to say to our two outstanding teachers of the year that it is clear why you are teachers of the year. Your persistence, your drive, your raising up of our children, your determination not to give up on them. A child doesn't show up in September, October into November, that child is still yours. You are still responsible for him or her. You are still reaching out. You are still trying to bring him or her, her in this case, back into the fold so that you can do the best you can. You can't build a better past with that child, but you can build a better future with that child, not giving up on that child, not giving up on the year with that child. It's clear why you are teachers of the year. And Ms. Scott, to your point, it is likewise clear why state summit of assessments have no value this year and certainly not with respects to any high stakes attached to them. We've got a few other comments. Dr. Pritchett has said bravo to you. Ms. Lipton has said wonderful presentation. Thank you. Mr. Strayhorn has said, great job by you two, Go Big Reds.
JDub.
That's to JDub. Dr. Pugh says, thank you. And I love it that you are aware that you are the best at what you do, how blessed our children and state are to have you both. So big ups to both of you. Thank you very, very much for your leadership and for you hanging tough with our kids this school year. I remember meeting with you earlier in the year and that was a rough, that was a rough meeting as we were contemplating this year. It's been a very, very difficult year. And we've got a couple more months to run through the finish line, but keep on keeping on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board members, we are at that point on the agenda for the state and federal legislative update. Ms. Martin, Mr. Martin Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs will begin this presentation. We will then pivot to Ms. Lipton and finally, Dr. Pritchett briefly. Mr. Ackley.
Thank you, Dr. Rice and Professor Scott. For what it's worth, my dad was in the first graduating class of Sexton High School way back when. Nonetheless, the state legislature returned today from a two week break. The House Education Committee met this morning. The Senate Committee on Education and Career Readiness has not yet posted a meeting notice. Committee Chairwoman Senator Tice did announce today that she is self quarantining because she's been exposed to COVID. So I'm not sure what that means as far as the future, how their committee meetings are going to go from now or where she is in that quarantine. She did not release that information. The Board's resolution passed this morning has been sent to the state legislature already. There are a number of bills that have been introduced that could be used to set aside educator evaluations, third grade student retention, and the A through F law for the 2021 school year. Our legislative liaison, Dr. Cheryl Kennedy, has been connecting with legislators and their staff to stress the importance and the need for these laws to be set aside again this year due to the pandemic. Governor Whitmer was reported to say that she looks forward to engaging with the legislature and local governments and school districts and others on funding, including the $3.9 billion for K-12 schools. The governor yesterday provided a broad outline of buckets of priorities. And for education, the governor said that the state could use funds to address learning loss experienced during the pandemic, providing wraparound services, including mental health and improving teacher recruitment and retention. The House Appropriations Chairperson Albert said in a statement following that that the House will be revealing soon their plan, its plan, and will move beyond broad ideas. He said that for the past several weeks, he and his colleagues have been working on a plan for how best to distribute additional federal COVID relief funds, and this plan will be unveiled in the near future. So there, that is basically an update. The legislature, like I said, they've been out for two weeks on a break, so there wasn't much action the last two weeks, but we expect that to pick up. And we certainly will be pressing on the accelerator to get those three set aside on state law.
Thank you, Mr. Ackley. We appreciate your your report. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to thank this committee for the the positive reception of I just wanted to thank this committee for the positive reception of the resolution that we, the Legislative Committee, worked hard to bring before you. I won't reiterate the importance of that resolution, and I do hope that the Legislature will take it seriously and act swiftly for all the reasons that we have discussed. I would also like to thank the Board for the positive reception of the statement on parental rights regarding standardized testing. I'm sure all of you have experienced the same frantic questions from parents across the state. And I think that this body with the constitutional authority that it has was appropriate in responding to this statement, and so I do thank you all for that. I would ask that, in addition to the resolution, that that statement, which was voted on today, also get sent and disseminated widely as we are in a two-week recommended shutdown at the same time that districts are preparing or believing they must prepare for a state summative assessment that can only happen in school. And as you can all appreciate, that will garner a fair amount of confusion and stress as well. And so the wide dissemination of our statement, I hope, will have the effect of adding a reminder of the parental rights that every parent in the state has with regard to the education, directing the education for their children. That's all that I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Just a real short NASB report. Just wanted to bring you up to date that the PEP Committee, Public Education Policy Committee at NASB, continues to meet monthly. We are working on four different policy statements. Began that last month. There was a lot of wordsmithing when you get eight people on a call. It's interesting. So we're still working on the first policy statement, but I will keep you updated as that goes along. Our deadline is to try to get all four done by July so that we're ready to present those to the General Conference of NASB in October. I was able to attend remotely, and I believe Ellen was also, the Legislative Conference sponsored by NASB. I thought it was very well done, given the fact that they had lots of presenters and you connected, obviously, through technology. I personally didn't have any hiccups along the way, so presentations were well-done. A lot of discussion about social-emotional health, social-emotional learning, a lot of discussion about learning loss. Secretary Cardona also had a 45-minute session where he focused mostly on looking forward, doing education, dreaming education differently, starting next year as we hopefully begin to move out of this pandemic. So those are my reflections anyways from Legislative Conference. I don't know, Ellen, whether you had any additional ones or...
Just to say that I found it enormously helpful to hear how other states are responding, and it allowed me to further reflect on the difference that a state that is, as Michigan is, heavily what we call local-control state versus those states that are more state-driven. I won't comment or render an opinion on which is better or worse. That is clearly not appropriate, but I was certainly in, very impressed by the difference in the ability to respond to a pandemic as, you know, comparing states that are local-control versus more centrally-directed. Thank you.
I would concur with that comment. It's always interesting to hear about other states, so. That pretty much finishes my report, but I'm going to move into the next item, which is NASB nominations. Each year, NASB, at, again, General Conference, recognizes distinguished leaders for their contribution to improving education for all children, and three different awards are presented. In order for those awards to be presented, obviously, somebody needs to be nominated, and a information has to be provided to their selection committee. And so I would like to move to nominate Dr. Sheila Alice for the NASB Friend of Education Award and Michelle Fecto for the NASB Distinguished Service Award. Those applications are due by May 23, and I have already been in contact with Marilyn Snyder, who would assist with those applications. So that's my motion.
I'd second that motion.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you do a quick roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Unanimous approval.
Thank you very much. No hanging chads. Dr. Pritchett, do you have any other elements for your presentation or your report?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations to Ms. Alice and Ms. Fecto. Comments by State Board of Education members? Are there any additional comments from the State Board of Education? You've had a valuable day, but perhaps you have other reflections? Any additional reflections?
Sure.
Doc, Dr. Pugh, were you, were you?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Dr. Pugh, Ms. Tilly, did I hear Tom McMillan as well?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Mr. McMillan. Let's roll.
All right, I just wanted to, a question around the CEPI study, and if we could get that, Brandy, I'm not sure if I know, I went through my information and not sure if I know which one we were referring to when we talked about the data that helped to inform or overlaying the data that was presented today on the actual, on top of the outcome data as far as cases. And then just a thank you to Dr. Rice and to Dr. Albrecht and to the State Board members for the hard-fought battle, and the war is not lost. We'll continue as it relates to the assessment and the crazy decision that was made. And then I just wanted to thank fellow Board members for the press event that was made as we looked at the decisions by the Legislature as it relates to opening and closing of schools and tying funding to the authority of the opening and closing of schools. And so just thanking those who were able to participate. I think as it was, the response of parents and teachers was favorable to that, and I continue to argue that, you know, we have a legislature that is delving into the authority of public health and then just making sure that our public health director uses that power and that authority. You know, we thank the governor for vetoing a House bill that would have taken that authority away, meaning the powers, the epidemic or the pandemic powers. And so, you know, for the sake of our children, for the sake of our parents in our school districts who are yet confused and out there trying to figure things out, you know, we just really hope that we can get some clarification that comes from the Department of Health and Human Services. We know that the Centers for Disease Control has definitely said that the only way that we're going to get ourselves out of this is, yes, the vaccine, but we also have to look at putting a pause on the economy and on education. And I think that we have to go beyond just making suggestions, but actually do what we did back in November when we saw a 70% decrease in hospitalization rates in cases. And, you know, we're only talking about life and death here. Our death rates may not be that high, but that's, one, it's a lagging indicator, but two, there's more to the impact of COVID than death rates. And, you know, I think we all know that. There are lingering effects, and especially, we're seeing those in our children, and we're seeing our children in the hospital.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Tilly and then Mr. McMillan.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh, thank you again for your leadership with that press conference. I'm happy I was able to be a part of it. It was very important. So thank you for that. Dr. Rice, I had, for the last several months, I've asked you about Benton Harbor. I would really love an update on Benton Harbor and the other partnership districts. And I know there's been, I think, three rounds of funding from the federal government funnelled through the state to the school districts, and I'm sure that it's been a great aid to them. So they may have been able to, you know, create some short-term innovative solutions for their schools. I would love to hear those as well.
We have just a few notes on that. Number one, we have a partnership district report scheduled for next month by Dr. Bill Pearson, our head of the Office of Partnership Districts and the interim Deputy Superintendent. So that's number one. Relative to the funding, one of those three sets of fundings has moved out into local school districts or is available to local school districts. A portion of the second is available to local school districts. None of the third is available to local school districts. The federal government, the United States Department of Education, has yet to share its guidance on the third of the three pools of federal education funding. Deputy Superintendent Garant gave a presentation on these funding sources last month, and we're happy to have him give another presentation, either in May or in June, as makes best sense, and we'll continue to update the Board. But again, it's been a little bit slow on SER III, a little bit slower than many of us expected. On the other hand, it's a big pot of federal money. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Mr. McMillan?
Was Ms. Tilly done? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make the observation that, you know, the reason we had all these, you know, the masking and the distancing and all this with schools was because, A, I heard teachers that might be vulnerable, and B, there might be vulnerable adults at home or vulnerable people. But since, you know, both of those groups can now get the vaccine, and with the vaccine, you know, according to CDC's statistics that I've seen, you know, their, kids have always been less harmed, it would be less harmful than the flu. That statement they've never removed from their website. They continue to say that the flu is more of a health issue for healthy young children. And then with the vaccine, you know, I mean, there's no, I don't see why we should even be distancing or subjecting these kids to, you know, really very long-term harm, you know? There's talk about more long-term harm from COVID. There's a lot of long-term harm and a lot of mental issue, health issues. There's just so many things, the child abuse that's being thwarted on these kids due to the state rules, that's unnecessary. You know, I just, I find it appalling, and I really would hope that, you know, whether it's sports or in schools, you know, the science is certainly not being followed. There's, you know, it's a desire to control and a desire to scare, but, you know, there's never, and the media's at fault, too. There's nothing, you know, that sells more, gets more viewers than, you know, to scare people. And we know that it's the famous, it's what dictators love doing, to scare people and anybody who wants big government. So, you know, it's a shame, and I think that, again, the goalposts keep getting moved, I guess, because it used to be, like I said, the reasons why it happened have all been alleviated with vaccines, and now there's going to be other reasons. There's going to, you know, the goalposts have to be moved again in order to, and the kids are the ones that are being harmed and especially, which is very unfortunate. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It's not my habit to respond to comments as a rule, but the science really is and continues to be to wear masks irrespective of the fact that many have been vaccinated. I mean, that is the advice of the Centers for Disease Control. It is scientifically based. It is about the epidemiologists, and I just want to be clear about that. Dr. Pritchett and then Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to again thank our teachers, our administrators, our Board members, and most especially our students, who didn't ask for NIMSTEP, but they didn't ask for pandemic either, but most of them will dutifully take this assessment. And I totally agree with Dr. Albrecht and Dr. Rice and appreciate their advocacy through their editorials and their comments to the press that these are totally unnecessary, but they are something that we now have to implement. So again, thank you to the students of Michigan as they continue to be resilient, much more resilient than most adults, from my observations, and because they want to learn, they respect their teachers. I think our two Teachers of the Year here today prove that, that teachers are deeply concerned about their students and are already thinking about, how do we begin to plan for those students who may have had some learning loss, and how do we continue to support them? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I just want to piggyback on to just a comment, a little back and forth between you and Tom. The science is not there for masks. I can't, you know, it's taken a long time for me to get to a place where it's time for us to really start, like, we need to unlayer things and stay rooted in the truth. The science is there for N95 masks. If you're going to make a mask mandate that actually stands the chance of addressing the spreading of an upper respiratory virus, you need isolation rooms and N95 masks. N95 masks that have been specially fitted and tested to the person who's going to wear it, unless you're going to line up every single Michigander and provide that for them. What we're experiencing is exactly what other states who didn't have these mandates experienced when they didn't shut the show down. and provide that for them. What we're experiencing is exactly what other states who didn't have these mandates experienced when they didn't shut the show down. I would not recommend another shutting down. I would not recommend standing by inaccurate mandates that are not evidence-based. They are not. And the truth is, sitting in the middle of the quarantine and experiencing the chat and that conversation that goes on with healthcare professionals that know the standard of care, that understand the science, they never bought it in the first place. So when people are done, they're done because the evidence isn't there. It is not true when she tells Michiganders that that is what is going to protect them. And I'm really sick of hearing false, not evidence-based recommendations that then create policy for our people.
Here, here.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Tilly, you have something in the chat. Would you like to share it or would you simply like it to be in the chat?
I can share. I was saying that the CDC chief is urging Governor Whitmer to close Michigan again because of the numbers. And as far as vaccinations, over half of the population in Michigan has still not been vaccinated. And remember, people still have to get those second rounds out of the ones that are. They anticipate that the vaccination will last only for about six months, and it is not 100% effective. So we still need to, you know, move with caution, even those that have the vaccination. You still need to social distance. You still need to wear your mask. You still need to take precautions. And I don't know how we look at data of people catching the disease, data of people dying, data of people that catch the disease and then because they have other conditions, it has attacked those conditions, and they're still sick. Like, I have family members who have COVID. I have family members that are still sick and don't have COVID anymore, but it has attacked their heart, their lungs. So this is something that is very serious, and it's better to be safe than sorry. So any precaution that we can take, we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pew, you indicate you have a comment?
Yes.
Excuse me. And I've long ago stopped trying to impress people who do not understand and don't believe in science, real science. And so I just want to actually, just based on some information that Tiffany shared, I'll just go a little bit deeper because I know that sometimes the media is on this call, and I know that some of our board members definitely try to get those soundbites in. And so to make sure we're countering those soundbites, hopefully, some of the facts that Tiffany brought up will get out there. But more importantly, when we talk about vaccine, yes, we are doing better on vaccine. Yes, we need more vaccine distributed, but we also need to make sure that we're pausing and we're stopping the spread of the virus. And just as important, that we're stopping the variants from further mutating. Also want to, and then all of the other things, the cases, the hospitalization rate, the strain on the hospitals, the strain on the school districts. But just looking at the vaccine data and how it's being distributed, it's not equitable at all. According to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services data that was updated on April the 12th, 35.74% of whites have been vaccinated. This is the initial vaccine. 3.78% of non-Hispanic blacks. When we look at Hispanics, that's 1.24. So only 4% of African Americans, according to this data, if I'm reading it correctly and if it's updated, have received the vaccine. And yes, we do not know that some of those are unknowns, but the unknown number continues to come down. And so we do not see those other population, our indigenous population, 0.24%, to the point of the completion vaccine. That's 21% for whites, just at 2% for blacks, 0.56% for Hispanics, and 0.13% for Native Americans or our indigenous population. And so just making sure that when we talk again, that we're talking about data that we can apply to all populations, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Everyone wasn't here for my beginning remarks about COVID-19. In the last seven weeks, we've had an increase of 149,000. Actually, since our last board meeting, five weeks ago, we've had an increase of 149,000 cases, a 25% rise in just five weeks. We've had an increase in deaths from 15,670 to 16,512, a rise of 5.4%. According to the CDC website, Michigan is now the leader among states in both recent cases and recent cases per 100,000 residents. That's not in question. Yesterday, CDC Director Dr. Rochelle Walensky urged Michigan to, quote, "close things down," unquote, to help flatten the new case curve and reduce hospitalizations and deaths. Positivity rates, hospitalization rates due to COVID, deaths due to COVID have all increased in recent weeks. Cases are up seven weeks in a row. It is true that vaccinations have been administered and have been administered very, very well and very, very swiftly. But it's also true that at 5.37 million vaccinations administered through yesterday, that these vaccinations, while helpful, don't vaccinate an entire population, don't get us to herd immunity quite yet. Ultimately, the vaccinations will protect us in the short and midterm. However, we need to redouble our mitigation efforts. That is not contested among scientists, either here or across the country. And that includes mask-wearing, social distancing, hand washing, and disinfecting. That's not my opinion, although it is. It's the opinion of every major epidemiologist in the country.
It's not true.
The better the mask, the better off you are. But any cloth mask is better than no cloth mask. Ventilation is important. Outdoor and socially-distanced meetings are important. The rise, week to week, in COVID cases in Michigan, seven weeks of increases in a row, goes from 5,600 cases the week of February 13th through 20th to 45,817 cases the week of April 3rd through the 10th, an increase of 40,122 cases, an increase of more than 600%. Different contexts require different efforts. And to ignore the run-up and to ignore the variants and to ignore the increases, not only in hospitalizations but in deaths, to ignore hospital systems that our hospital administrators and our doctors and our nurses are saying are increasingly overrun, is to do so at our peril. Different contexts require different actions. We are not in the same place that we were seven weeks ago. We have a responsibility to respond accordingly.
And it clearly shows that the lockdowns have been a failure of the governor compared to the states that didn't lock down. So.
Let me just.
And there's plenty of epidemiologists that disagree with you. They're just not usually allowed to be heard. But, you know, we're in Orwellian society now.
Well, I was simply saying that I thought.
When you say no epidemiologists, well, it says that it disagrees. There's plenty of them.
What I was saying was that mask-wearing is critical to mitigation, that social distancing, critical to mitigation, that it is important periodically to pause if your cases and your hospitalization rates and your deaths start re ascending. I think that you have to be nimble in the midst of a pandemic. That's not simply my opinion. It's the opinion of the vast majority of major epidemiologists in the country. I want to thank the board for a very spirited board meeting today. Future board meetings are Tuesday, May 11th, May 18th, June 8th, and August 10th. All of those but for May 18th are regular board meetings. May 18th is a work session. If there are any topics board members would like included in future meeting agendas, please notify Marilyn or me. Let the record show that it is 3:41. And board members, we are once again giving you the gift of time back. Enjoy your day. Thank you.